Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Longdale City Council. Due to the Los Angeles County Safer at Home order, this meeting will be conducted via WebEx and livestream through the city's YouTube channel, the city's website, and the Longdale Community Cable Television. I'm going to ask that the staff in the city council and the police remember to state your name and your title prior to speaking, asking a question, or reporting out. If you do not need to speak at that time, if you would kindly mute your devices so as not to cause interference or background noise, that would be greatly appreciated. Voting will be done via roll call vote. Please respond with a yes, no, or extension when the vote is called. I'm going to ask the, um, I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:30. And I'm going to ask the Assistant City Clerk to conduct the roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Osborne?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Here.
All members present?
Thank you. I'm going to ask Councilmember Reed to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good. Alright, thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Reed, and of course, we are praying for those who have been affected by COVID-19, the coronavirus, and we pray that, um, that those continue to be healthy and that follow the team, the blessed city of Longdale and the state of California, and of course, our nation. With that, we will move to the public safety report. Is Captain Allen available?
Ah, yes, I am.
Yes, sir.
Ah, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for April 28th through May 3rd. I first want to continue to thank the citizens of Longdale who continue to do a great job following the rules and regulations set by Governor Newsom. As a reminder, when out in public, Longdale citizens should maintain social distancing, and when entering a business, you must wear a facial mask. These rules will stay in place until May 15th at the earliest. Information regarding social distancing, businesses opening, et cetera, are constantly being evaluated, and more information will be forthcoming as we closer to that date. During the past two weeks, calls for service have leveled off to all-time lows. We have begun to see a slight increase in overall crime statistics. Burglary and theft continue to be down 36 and 7% respectively. We have seen an increase, however, in grand theft autos. This increase is occurring throughout the county and not throughout Los Angeles County, and not just in the city of Longdale. Due to the fact more people have their vehicles parked during the day, the criminal element has more opportunities to steal vehicles from our streets. Many of these thefts come from vehicles whom doors were unlocked, windows were down, and some even with keys left in them. As a reminder, please lock your vehicle each and every time. And as always, if you see anyone suspicious in your neighborhood, please call the Sheriff's Department. In regards to the Best Western Hotel, your SAO teams have been assigned to patrol locations as the hotel has begun receiving occupants. To date, we have not had any events criminal in nature to report. The department continues to provide extra patrols to your big box doors. There have been no notable instances of crime or disturbances occurring at these locations. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Captain Allen, for that report. Are there any questions of the captain's report?
No questions, just a comment. This is Councilman Reed. I appreciate the quick response, though it was a busy day on the hit-and-run we had over on my neighborhood. So, thank you very much, appreciate the officers.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Captain Allen, for that report. Um, also, as a reminder to the council, if your answer to my answer is a no, your silence will be reflected as a no. So, to, everyone doesn't necessarily need to say no. If they say yes, then say yes, and then proceed, um, just so we can keep the slogan. Okay, let's go to oral communications. Is there any oral communications, Assistant City Clerk?
Ah, yes, Mayor, we have one. Rita Verbeil.
Thank you.
Uh, this is from Pam Monden, Longdale resident. It appears the Governor's Project Room Key launched Friday, April 3rd, 2020, but there was info as far back as March 30th or earlier. Personally, I missed any news reports on the subject until April 6th, when Naguna Woods was all over the news complaining that Orange County had established an agreement with a hotel adjacent to Senior Living. The city complained that they were not notified prior, and that no consideration was shown for senior citizens, their health, or safety. The county has since released the hotel from that agreement and moved to a neighboring city. Other cities have come forward complaining that too many have not been notified of the county agreements with local hotels, and that they have been given little to no information regarding the terms of agreements. Cities have not been afforded the opportunity to express concerns or have any negotiating power to protect their cities or residents. Any codes or zoning that the city has be damned. This is alleged to be legal as an emergency order and therefore supersedes any other criteria the city may have. Governor Newsom has expressed interest in using tax money to purchase some of the hotels and turn them into permanent housing after COVID restrictions begin to lift. Has anyone with the city of Longdale found out if we are going to have more hotels sign agreements? Whether or not the state plans to purchase any property in Longdale to transform into permanent housing going forward? What do any of you know, and how can you reassure residents that you are on this? I refuse to believe all of this started on April 3rd with Room Key launch. April 6th, Best Western signed, April 7th, the county signed. Corporate and attorneys were on board that weekend or the morning of the 3rd? No way. As I stated during the last meeting, this is not a "not in my backyard" issue. This is an impact issue. Longdale is less than two square miles. Our law enforcement numbers on any given shift are minimal, to say the least. Longdale cannot afford more officers, and we are too small, the city, to be expected to. My understanding is that the county will not provide extra officers now or in the future, and this should concern everyone in the city. How long have any of you known about the governor's plans to house the homeless during COVID? Not just in Longdale, but in the entire state? Prior to Best Western signing, did anyone contact hotels and motels to discourage these agreements? Who in this city is responsible, and how are they being held accountable? Please respond to my questions and put residents' minds at ease. That ends public comment.
Okay, thank you for that, um, public comment. Um, let's bring it up to the council. The seats are, any response of public comment? Um, let's start from Mr. Alex, he's on, yeah, alright, Mr. Osborne, Councilman Osborne.
Thank you, Robert. Um, I think the answer is, we answered that last time, that county didn't tell us anything until it was already on our doorstep. They basically hid it, and I think we know the reason why they hid it. They just didn't want to get the, uh, word out or the fight back that's been going on. That's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilman Reed?
Yeah, I'll, uh, yeah, let's sit down, I'll narrow that same thing. We found out the first week of April after things were already done, and cat's out of the bag. And we beat the county up over it, and we're doing the best we can with what we have. And I'll, um, see if Mayor or City Manager, Attorney wants to speak any further on that.
Okay, let's go to Councilman Pat Kearney.
I'll just say, don't let the city manager reply to this.
Okay, let's go to Mayor Protem Suarez.
Um, yes, just to pretty much echo what all my colleagues have stated. It was something that was split under the rug, and, you know, when it came to light, we did ask all those questions, but it does seem apparent that most of this was, um, done just so that there wouldn't be no pushback, um, so, uh, we're doing all we can, but, um, we are asking questions and continuing to press and see what our options are.
Thank you, um, Madam Mayor Protem. And I also would say that, um, yeah, this issue was actually brought out, of course, when, um, I attended the mediation, um, session that was, um, basically, um, at the request of Judge Carter and the folks from the county, they did in fact, um, basically infer that the reason why they didn't notify, um, communities is because they wanted to deal directly with the hotel so that they wouldn't basically meet, um, a resistance from the community. Kind of paraphrasing that, but that's the gist of, um, why they did not invite the city to be part of the implementation or even the design of the program. Neither did they contact the city of Longdale and other cities to get their feedback and their concerns and to address those concerns. So, that was a deliberate, um, strategy on the part of, um, the county, um, in L.A., uh, which is the agency that's actually implementing the program on behalf of the county of L.A. So, unless the, um, city attorney, city manager wanted to add something, that's what I would say on that particular issue.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, this is Kevin Chen, the city manager. Um, yes, just to echo what, um, all of you have already said. Um, our first formal, um, um, communication from the county regarding Project Room Key was on Thursday, April 9th. That's when their Director of the Homeless Initiative contacted me and the mayor, letting us know that the agreement with the Best Western had been struck a couple days before, and that the program would be moving forward in the next week. Um, we did receive some information prior to that, as I've mentioned to the council in open session before. We did receive some information from the COG that, um, the county was looking to assemble rooms from around the county to help the homeless during COVID-19. Um, but at that point, um, it didn't appear to be viable information, or it didn't have detailed information. Uh, in fact, um, it wasn't even called Project Room Key at the time. They were just asking for rooms, um, and asking cities to help, um, recruit hotels for that purpose. Um, but again, at that point, they were just looking for rooms, and we didn't quite know what to make of it. It sounded almost like a voucher program. Um, but again, up to that point, we had received no information, no inkling at all from the county that they were moving forward with this project, and that wasn't until April 9th. And that's all I have, Mayor. Can you hear me?
I can, I'm good.
Oops. I'm sorry, just to be fair.
I had on, I had on mute, sorry about that, folks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, it's Kevin Chen, City Manager. I'm sorry, after I, um, I'm not sure if you heard my full, um, statement there.
I did.
Oh, you did, okay, good, because after I concluded, um, I couldn't hear for about 10 or 15 seconds, so...
Yes, um, okay, I did, I was on mute for about 10 seconds there.
Okay.
I heard your whole statement.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that, um, statement. So, we were closed oral communications at this time, and public comments, and response from the council. So, we are now at item number, um, item letter F, um, which is the consent calendar. What is the theory of this body concerning the consent calendar?
Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney. I have one question on item one.
Yes, sir. Go ahead and ask your question.
Colonel, all we saved in this project after Redondo Beach pushback and often, all we saved on the construction cost was $21,000, and we had two and a half blocks to go. And is this going to delay the rest of Inglewood Avenue?
You're talking number two?
Um, the item, let me see, yeah, item two.
That's two, that's two.
Number two, okay. Two, yes.
Mr. Mayor, uh, this is Kevin Chen. Uh, Cohona Wee is on the line, um, our public, our interim Public Works Director. He could answer that question.
Right, directed to.
Councilmember Kearney, can you repeat the question again, please?
On your completion of project, if you have it broke down, it says construction cost from the original to what the final was. We had two and a half blocks to complete, and all we saved is $21,000? For the payment?
Um, the, yeah, for the completion of the project, we have three different phases of the project. The, uh, what we just completed is Phase Three, and the next one that we are going to do is a Phase One of the project, which is from Marine all the way to Manhattan Beach Boulevard. And we are working on it. The plan has been completed. We are finalizing it right at this point. We already have the preliminary engineering cost estimate. Um, the reason we did not move forward yet is because we are still establishing all of the funding for the project. As you are aware, about, um, two months ago, I brought the staff report to the city council for the approval of the amendment of the Prop C25, uh, for the Phase One project. The, uh, funding for Prop C25 from Metro, uh, has been allocated in the amount of $596,000. This funding was left in 2017, but I was able to bring it back to the city, and the agreement was signed and approved by the Metro, and the amount again is $596,000. And, uh, based on, after we filed the notice of completion for this project, we will have approximately $300,000 left over on the project, which we can use for the completion of Phase One of the project. Which, and if that's, um, the case, we are going to bring the staff report back to the city council to get an authorization to advertise the bit, uh, the, the, the project for bid purposes.
Okay, but, go ahead.
Yeah, um, the, we saved some money on the Phase Three projects right now, physically.
Yeah, you saved, uh, my question is, on the construction cost, we had two and a half blocks we didn't do from between 149th and Marine to 152nd, and all we saved is $21,000, is that correct?
Um, that is accurate, that is accurate. Um, during the constructions, we hit a lot of, uh, unforcing conditions. Um, we have a lot of utilities that was unmarked, and we got some delay, and we had some extra costs incurred because of the unforcing condition, and we spent a little bit more money. However, with the leftover money that we have for the project, with approximately about $300,000, we should be able to pave the road from Marine all the way to Manhattan Beach.
When you say pave the roads, you mean, uh, just the Longdale side? Or Redondo Beach, because you had pushback on this project from Redondo Beach already. Are they going to kick in some of the money for the rest of Inglewood Avenue? Or is Longdale?
Um, we are going, we are going to pave part of the Redondo Beach, uh, City of Redondo Beach pavement. Uh, what we did was, um, we made some arrangement with Redondo Beach. Right now, they do have a project at the intersection of Manhattan Beach and Inglewood. Their project is paid by some funding from, uh, South Bay COG, and that project basically only doing half of the streets because half of the streets belong to Redondo Beach. And our project handling half of the streets. Based on the conversation that I had with Redondo Beach, um, we made some exchange, basically. So, if Redondo Beach is going to do the full intersection construction for the traffic signal, we are going to help them to pave the road from Marine all the way to the freeway intersections, which is the City of Redondo Beach area. And the exchange, the exchange right now is basically, it's almost like a wash. The, Redondo Beach will fix the whole intersection of the traffic signal, and we will pave the road from Marine to go all the way to Manhattan Beach.
Okay, that's my question.
Okay, thank you for that, um, clarification, um, item number two. Uh, what is the pledge of this body concerning the consent calendar?
Well, this is Councilman Reed. If there's no further questions, I will move to approve.
Second, Councilman Kearney, I'll second.
Okay, the motion has been made by Councilman Reed that we approve the consent calendar and seconded by Councilman Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? We are none. Would the council please vote? Uh, let's have the roll call from the Assistant City Clerk.
Uh, on the consent calendar, uh, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you, sir. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. Public hearing concerning adoption of the 2020 Los Angeles County Fire Code by reference. Um, let's have the staff, the staff support.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is Sean, the Director of Community Development. Um, the item before you is for consideration to update the city's fire code, uh, which are done through Los Angeles County Fire, Fire Department. We, uh, update the codes every three years after they're updated by the California Legislature. Um, the city adopts the updated codes and modified by the County of Los Angeles with whom the city contracts for plan checks and building services, inspection, and fire services. Uh, the county adopted the updated fire code on March 10th, 2020. Accordingly, the city now must adopt the updated state fire code and the county codes, which have now been codified by the County of Los Angeles under Title III Fire Code, uh, within Chapter 15.20 of the Longdale Municipal Code. The project is exempt under SEQA. Um, there was no planning commission review. The city attorney has reviewed the attached, uh, proposed ordinance. Uh, there is no impact to funding, um, to the general fund, and staff recommends approval. I'll be happy to ask any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, um, that report. Are there any, um, points or clarifications, uh, from the staff report before I open the public hearing?
No.
Okay, hearing none. Um, it is now 6:52, I'm going to, what was that? Okay, it is now 6:52, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Public hearing is now, now, we've been, okay, I'm going to ask the, um, the city clerk to see if there's been any, um, one wish to, um, provide any public testimony.
Thank you, Mayor. None has been provided.
Okay, so there's no public testimony. Okay, so at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. It is now 6:52. The public hearing is now closed, and I'm going to bring it to the diocese for, diocese for, um, any deliberations from the council. What is the pledge of this body concerning this item? Item number seven, the adoption of the county fire code.
Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney. If there's no objections, I'll do a staff recommendation.
Okay, the motion has been made by Kearney that we adopt, um, the 2020 Los Angeles County Fire Code by reference, and is it seconded by Suarez?
Ma, yes, I second. Mayor Protem Suarez second.
Okay, and seconded by Mayor Protem Suarez. Um, is there any, um, discussion or debate on this motion? Hearing none, would the council please vote?
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to read the title first?
Yes, please, please do that, thank you.
This is ordinance number 1171-20, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Longdale, California, amending portions of Longdale Municipal Code Chapter 15.20 to update the uniform code adopted by the city by reference by adopting the 2020 Los Angeles County Fire Codes with local amendments and binding of exemption from SEQA. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam City Attorney. Um, without any further, um, discussion on the motion, there's not any. Would the council please vote? I'm going to ask the city clerk to give us the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. On, uh, public hearing, item number seven, motion by Kearney and the seconded by, uh, Suarez. Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Excellent, thank you. The next item, under administration, the item number eight, concerning appointment to the South Bay Investment Board. Let's have the staff report.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Uh, this is Kevin Chen, City Manager. Um, the city was recently contacted by the South Bay Workforce Investment Board, or WIB, regarding a vacancy in one of the city's seats on the private, uh, on the Business Private Industry Council. This seat is currently filled by Ms. Jarmin de Armas Mitchell of Wheatots, um, that expires on June 30th, 2020. The WIB supports the nomination of Mr. Frank Rodriguez, whom is the Sales Manager at Calich Incorporated, and he's, he's also involved with Casabella Properties, um, and Fast and Accurate Settlement Services. At this time, the city, um, can, the city council can reaffirm the WIB's recommendation of Mr. Rodriguez for this nomination, or it can reopen the process to, uh, other applicants to fill this seat. The term of office for this position is from July 1, 2020, to June 30, 2024. Um, staff looks for your direction on this matter, and if you choose to open the process to other applicants, staff will return at a future city council meeting with names of applicants for you to nominate and to submit to the WIB. With that, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Manager, for that, um, presentation. Uh, Mr. Frank Rodriguez, uh, going to point to the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. I would say, um, say that this board is one of those that's kind of hard to fill because you have to be available, obviously, as a business person, to, um, lend some time, um, to this board. So, we appreciate, uh, Mr. Frank Rodriguez's interest in representing the, um, the business community here in the City of Longdale. Is there any, um, discussion on this matter?
No, no.
Okay. And, uh, at this time, I would like to, uh, appoint, uh, Mr. Frank Rodriguez to the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. Uh, just so the record is, can I get a second?
This is Councilman Kearney, I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion has been made by Mayor Paul Miles, and seconded by Councilman Pat Kearney for the appointment of Mr. Frank Rodriguez to the South Bay Workforce Investment Board. And I'm trying to see, do we need to take an official vote on this? Let's go ahead and just have an official vote. Assistant City Clerk?
On item number eight, moved by Mayor Paul Miles, seconded by Councilmember Kearney. Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is item nine, concerning Billboard Subcommittee selection. Let's have the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, historically, the past practice when dealing with billboard proposals, the city council has appointed two city council members to a billboard subcommittee whenever the city receives proposal. Essentially, the subcommittee reviews the billboard proposal and makes recommendations concerning the proposal and forwards these recommendations regarding the proposal to the entire city council for consideration. Uh, the prior, uh, billboard subcommittee was selected on December 5th, 2016, and consisted of city council members Kearney and Reed. Um, this time, uh, staff has received two billboard signed proposal in the city's, uh, right of way from Longdale Media LLC. And as I mentioned, uh, following historical past practice, staff is requesting that the city council appoint two city council members to a billboard subcommittee to consider the two billboard proposals being proposed by Longdale Media. Uh, this proposal is exempt from SEQA. It's not met, not applicable for planning commission review. The city attorney has reviewed the staff report. Uh, there's no impacts to funding that, at this time, regarding this, uh, selection of the subcommittee members. Uh, staff, uh, is looking for direction from the council on, on two, uh, subcommittee members. This concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that report. Um, so we're looking to appoint two members of the council to the subcommittee for the two billboard proposals. I know of one council member who has expressed interest as being Mr. Pat Kearney. I know of one council member who has expressed interest at being Mr. Pat Kearney. Are there any members of the council that would be interested in being on this committee?
This is Councilman Reed. I'll leave it open to see if one of my two colleagues would like to do this or not.
Okay, two colleagues, are you?
I'll let you do it again, Dan. I've no desire.
That sounds, that's one for you, then. What about Mayor Protem Suarez?
That's fine with me.
Okay, thank you. So, at this point, I'm going to appoint Councilman Pat Kearney and Councilmember Daniel Reed to the Billboard Subcommittee for this project. I think we can take that with unanimous consent, right? Yeah.
Yes, you can.
We can do that with unanimous consent. Okay. You gentlemen are now back on the subcommittee for Billboard. Have fun.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Okay, next item on our agenda is item ten, is a budget update for the quarter ending March thirty-first, two thousand twenty. Let's have the staff report. Marla Pendleton. Can you hear me? She's on mute.
Yes, this is Marla Pendleton. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Marla Pendleton, Director of Finance, City Treasurer. For your filing and information purposes, this is a third quarter budget update for the quarter ending March thirty-first, two thousand twenty. It's focusing on the general fund and looking at our revenue for this year. It started out, it started out with a lot of rises and then COVID nineteen hit. Now, all sorts of things are impacting our revenue. We're seeing a little bit of a different situation. Overall, we're actually seeing a decrease in our revenue, starting with our sales and use tax. Sales and use tax, as you know, this has quite a few things happening with it. One is, we now have a lot of internet sales instead of sales with our businesses being closed. As such, we don't know exactly what's coming in. It's based on point of sale now. And tax returns that were due for the quarter ending March thirty-first have a ninety day delay now, extension for filing and payment. Those are now due at the end of July. Because of that, we don't know exactly what is due for this current quarter. And once that extension ends, businesses will be required to file their tax returns. And this isn't according to us, this is according to the state. But then they will have an option to have a twelve month installment payment plan. That installment payment plan is for all taxes that are due by a business up to fifty thousand dollars. So, if their tax liability for the third quarter is less than fifty thousand, then quarters after that could be added into this installment payment. And then they would be due over a one year period, one twelfth of it for each business. So, because of that, we're seeing that there is going to be a delay in our third quarter taxes, a delay that could be a year and a quarter for it to be fully collected. And that will result in money not being collected this fiscal year, but next fiscal year. So, the amount basically that we're seeing as a decrease in sales taxes is attributed to those two local changes, or excuse me, state changes. We're looking at approximately two hundred and twenty-one thousand not being received this year, but it'll be received next year. The rest of the business closures and internet sales, we don't know how that's going to impact us at this time with taxes not being filed until July. Additional revenue, our sales transaction taxes are Measure L, which is also a sales tax, but it's a transactional tax. That is also subject to the ninety day extension and the installment payment, the fifty thousand dollars per business. So, that too will be delayed. However, based on what we're trending on our Measure L, we're actually seeing an increase over what we budgeted. We budgeted two point one for the year, two point one million. We're estimating about two million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand. So, we're actually looking at an increase of one forty-nine. Other revenue sources that are significantly changed are other taxes. Included in other taxes, the most significant item is our TOT. As you know, with travel, you're both basically supposed to stay in place. People are, you know, asked not to travel and hotels have not been getting all of the occupancy that they normally get when LAX is open and people are traveling and staying close by. So, we got our revenue in through the end of the third quarter, the last being received on Thursday. All of it's come in. There's a little bit of decline, but not a lot. But we're looking at more of a decline in the fourth quarter and next fiscal year. The impact on that at this time is a hundred and forty-three thousand that we're looking at not being realized. I'm sorry. Others is two hundred and twenty. UUTs are utility user taxes. We're seeing a decrease in that, a hundred and forty-three thousand not being realized. Our charges for services, we're seeing that a little bit more will be coming in. And a lot of that has to do with our encroachment permits, which includes all of our engineering permits and everything from our Public Works Department. That's actually coming out a little bit higher than budget. We're looking at a hundred and eighteen thousand. So, the bottom line on our revenue for this year, based on our current projections, is three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars will not be realized of what we budgeted and thought was coming in. Now, on the good side of that, we're looking at revenue not coming in, but we're also looking at some cost savings. So, if we look at the expenses for the general fund, and that's on my third page of my budget report, you'll see it by department and you'll see all the departments, the pluses and minuses. It starts with our general fund support. General fund support is where we have funds, our departments and funds outside of the general fund, where they are not fully recovering money from user charges and they were basically transferring money to supplement those budgets. When we looked at the budgets that are getting funding, we're specifically looking at our rec center. Our rec center had to cancel a lot of their facility reservations, the classes, and a lot of refunds took place this year, and they're not able to have activities throughout the current year. So, based on that, in order to make their budget whole, we're looking at another, almost a hundred thousand dollars more needs to be transferred over to the Community Services Department to make their budget whole this year. So, that's the negative that you see on the first line. Everything else, we're kind of seeing some cost savings, and there's various reasons for it. If we look at the next one, well, I just made a comment. City Attorney looks like that one. Right now, it looks like it'll break even just based on the trending. But we know with Project Room Key and all the related services coming in, those costs could exceed the budget now. Don't know what the costs are now, don't know the hours that are going into it. But my guess is, it will be exceeding this fiscal year because of the additional services that are being required. City Clerk, we're seeing a savings, about fifty-two thousand. That's predominantly due to a retirement, the vacancy during the year, and then the position being reclassified into a lower level one. So, that is directly salary savings for the fiscal year. City Manager, we're seeing the same thing. We're seeing about a ninety-four thousand dollar, almost ninety-five thousand dollar savings. And that has to do with the prior city manager retiring at the beginning of the year. He went part-time. The vacancy is attributing to a salary savings in that budget of ninety-five thousand. In general operations, we have about fifty thousand left over. That is a budgeted cost for the community center for an upgrade. We're looking at security. We put some money in there in case there need to be resigned. That looks like it's not, you know, that's not going to be spent this year, so there will be fifty thousand left. Municipal Services has a variety of things, unspent revenue, some cost savings related to positions. But theirs looks like a savings of about eighty-seven thousand for the year. Public Works, again, there's money left over, but let's not take it as that's a savings. There's about two hundred and one thousand left in the general fund for Public Works, but that's due to project work not being done. So, that money will actually be continued in the next fiscal year. So, it will be spent, but not this fiscal year. It'll be moved over for those projects. Community Service Crossing Guards, also, we anticipate seeing about a fifty thousand savings. And that's relating to services being canceled earlier with school being let out early and kids being at home and not needing those services. So, we are looking again at a savings of about fifty thousand. So, with that all being said, we see a shortfall in our revenue. If you look at the very first page of my report, you see a little schedule, and it'll show you revenues showing a shortfall of three sixty-eight, expenditures, budget to projected actual, four hundred and eighty-eight savings. But if you look at the very, the second column, it'll say amended budget. You'll notice that the revenue budget is higher than the expenditures. So, we started out with about three hundred and fifty thousand that we didn't budget in the first place. So, that's a good thing. If you look at the estimated fiscal year estimates, we're looking at about fifteen million in revenue, fourteen point five million in expenditures, about a half a million dollars left over. So, that means we'll actually be in a positive figure, remembering that this isn't money to spend. This is money that two hundred thousand of it will be carried forward to next year for capital projects. The other two hundred, we know there's some things that will be adjusted during the year. There might be things in funds that need to be transferred to general fund because they overextended. So, I'm positive that this money will be utilized between now and the end of the year. But the good thing is, we will break even. We're not going a loss. And we're good for this year. Next year's going to be more challenging. But this year so far, we're looking good and we need to continue to monitor our budget, and that's where we are. So, that concludes my report. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank you for that comprehensive report and the ease with which you was to follow the report and to follow the numbers. I do have one quick question, a quick, although I know, I think I know the answer, but just to make sure. On the internet sale, you mentioned that it was a point of purchase. How do you determine the point of purchase?
The internet sales, the way it happened, is where, wherever the items that are being bought, where they're being delivered to. So, the sales tax will be wherever the delivery of the items. So, that actually, this last year, our sales tax has increased substantially because the law changed with that, the internet sales. Yeah, so that actually is... Yes, yes, exactly. So, that's increased our revenue substantially.
Okay, now that you mean there was a certain member of the Assembly who passed that deal, that internet deal named Burke. But with that being said, what, one of the things that people, and I'm not sure if this still happens or not, what people would do, they would find their favorite city with a lower tax rate and then they would purchase it and have the delivery at that city so they can get a... The end product, of course, would be cheaper because the tax rate in that city would be lower than maybe the city they actually live in, the city they actually made the purchase in. Is that, has that been rectified? Has that happened? Does that still happen? That's why I asked the question. How do we know whether it was actually purchased?
You know what? I can't say because I don't audit or look at every business. But I do get quarterly reports from HDL that looks at all that information, and we have it by industry. And we're seeing that our sales in that area, the internet sales, have been increasing substantially. So, that is one of the bigger areas of our revenues going up this last year. Is the Wayfair is the one that actually is the business that caused this change. So, that is one of them. I can't tell you if anything's been resolved or not.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that report. Are there any questions of the...
Mayor, just an added comment. Just an added comment, this Jim. Marla, so it's also beneficial, anybody in Londale that chops online with Amazon or buys through eBay or whatever it is, all those added, we don't really like because it was just an added cost. But that does come back home, at least a portion of it.
Yes, it does. Yes, yes.
And that was the Wayfair, um, being the issue referring to that, sending women out of Burke, um, Boston.
Yes.
Stop stocking up to the boss, Roger.
I'm just saying.
You know what? It's helping Londale. It's helping Londale, so...
Marla, do we know what the percentage is that Londale gets?
You know what? I don't have it, I don't have it right now, but I can get you that information because I do have reports that have that in there.
I'm just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, I can get that information for you, Jim.
Thank you. Mayor, this is Councilman Kearney.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I have a question from Marla. In your crystal ball for next budget year, do you supersede layoffs or furloughs for part-time employees? Because I know what they're paying them now, correct?
We, as you know, we have our budget subcommittee and you're part of that.
Yes.
So, that will be a discussion. We are still putting our numbers together for next year, but based on just revenue estimates, I'm looking at about a million dollar decline than what we have right now.
Okay.
So, we will have to see how we balance our budget so that, and are we going to use reserves? Are we going to cut expenses? Or what are we going to do to make sure we balance? But that is something that does need to be considered.
And do we have right now what we're paying the stay-at-home employees?
I'm sorry?
Do you have...
Do we have an estimate on the cost? Yes, right now, for people staying at home, we're spending about forty thousand, forty thousand dollars of pay period. And that means they're at home, not working at home, but at home getting paid. And they're coding it COVID nineteen. We have paid to date a hundred and fifteen thousand to that charge. At the rate we're going, if we continue to do forty thousand a pay period, we'll be at three hundred thousand by the end of the fiscal year. If people don't return to work or we stop paying for stay-at-home.
Okay, I have other questions. We'll bring it up at our next committee meeting.
Okay.
So, will that still hold true if the orders are completely lifted after the fifteenth of May? And we bring everyone back to work?
Well, it, right now, it's a hundred and fifteen. It would still be forty thousand. It would still be another pay period, so that would end at about one fifty. But the question is, if it's lifted, are we going, are we just going to open and everyone's going to return back to parks, community? Are we going to be fully functional in our community center? Are we going to be out on the streets, you know, code enforcement, tickets? So, that would be the question. Is everything going to be normal on the fifteenth? Or is it going to be phased in and we'll still have people that won't be able to be fully functional and working?
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other questions in the report?
No.
Okay, I want to thank you, Madam City Treasurer, Finance Director, for your report. Yes, ma'am. Okay, item number eleven.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interrupt you, this is Tiffany. The recognition on that one was received and filed, so could we have a vote on that, please?
Okay, that's received and filed. Let's have a vote on that.
Thank you.
This is the City Clerk.
Sorry, I, I, I don't have a motion or a second, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, let, let's have a motion by one of the councilmen.
This Councilman Kearney, I'll make a motion, we accept. Fine, and, slash treasurer's report.
Yes. And a second by-
This is Councilman Reed, I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Kearney and seconded by Reed that we receive and file the financial, um, the budget update for October ending March, for the quarter, rather, ending March the twenty first. Um, if there's any discussion on the motions, being none, would the Assistant Coach, please give a call.
Uh, for item number ten, uh, Mayor Protem Suarez.
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes, five zero.
All right, thank you, sir. With item eleven, consideration of future modifications of the city's operations due to COVID nineteen. Let's have the staff report as the city manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Um, as you know, due to Co- the COVID nineteen pandemic and the stay-at-home orders that are in place, uh, the city set, has had to make operational modifications a couple times now, once on March sixteenth, and then again on April sixth. Um, and as we're now into the month of May, um, there are upcoming annual community events within about a month's time that, that'll require decisions as to whether the events will be conducted as usual, whether it will be postponed, or if the events should be canceled. The two upcoming events that we're talking about are the Memorial Day Ceremony, scheduled for May twenty fifth, and the Health, Safety and Pet Fair, scheduled for June sixth. Of course, um, any decision on these events will depend largely on what happens with the stay-at-home order, if it's extended beyond May fifteenth, or whether it's lifted. However, as I mentioned in the report, even if the stay-at-home orders are not extended, the city council may want to consider other factors that could have an impact on these events if they are allowed to happen, such as, so with regard to the Memorial Day Ceremony, um, whether or not, um, we're able to secure color guards from Hawthorne High School due to the current school closure, um, whether or not, uh, there will be possible limitations on the number of people that will be allowed to participate in public events or gatherings, whether or not social distancing requirements, um, will still be in place. And, um, in this case, if they are in place, that could have an impact on how widely spread we will have to ask participants to be at the ceremony, and, um, you know, how that might impact the serving of breakfast and where people can sit for breakfast. And then, um, of course, um, again, even if the, uh, stay-at-home orders are lifted, uh, there still could be concerns, uh, amongst the public regarding COVID nineteen infection, and that could affect whether or not people are comfortable with going to, um, public, uh, events such as the Memorial Day Ceremony. And then likewise with the Health, Safety and Pet Fair, um, there, uh, whether or not the social distancing requirements will still be in place, as that could have, um, an impact on the entertainment portion of that event. So for example, as I understand it, um, there are typically, um, entertainment elements for kids such as, um, bounce houses or jumpers. Um, there are often demonstrations that are provided, uh, regarding pets, and then also classes, instructional classes regarding, um, how to, uh, take care of your pets. Um, whether or not, again, the, there, there will be possible limitations on the number of people that will be allowed to participate in these events, and, um, the participation level, given the concern with COVID nineteen infection, which could, um, impact not only, um, those who might want to partic- who, who might want to attend the event, but also the number of vendors that we might get for the event as well. Um, next, uh, staff asks that you, um, approve the consensus of the city council from your discussion at the April twentieth meeting to temporarily suspend the Lawndale Beat Transit Service, which began today, and to reinstate the Lawndale Special Transit Service as soon as possible. Um, as mentioned in the report, we'll have to install equipment on the vehicles for our drivers' protection before we can restart this program. And then beyond these items, um, and depending on the stay-at-home orders again, staff will return for more direction from the city council on events, um, both June and July. But for now, we ask that you give us direction on the Memorial Day Ceremony, the Health, Safety and Pet Fair, uh, event, and your approval on the suspension of the Lawndale Beat and reinstatement of the Lawndale, uh, Special Transit Service. So with that, that concludes my, um, presentation, and I'm available for questions, as well as Mike Estes, our Director of Community Services. Thank you.
This is Mayor Protem Suarez. I have a question.
Yes, go right ahead.
Um, so my question is-
Excuse me for just a second. Let's take them, um, one, one at a time. So let's start with the Memorial Day, um, Ceremony. Your question regarding the Memorial Day Ceremony?
Well, it's more general, um-
Okay, let's, let's do it in general, of course.
Okay, so it's, um, this is more directed towards our city attorney. Um, I know they're working on legislation regarding if somebody contracts COVID, you know, whether they're at a business or whatnot, and, you know, if they try and sue whoever, or the business owner or whatnot. Is there any, are there any laws in place protecting us, um, with that? I mean, I, I know they're still working on some of it, so, you know, how protected are we if we were to throw an event?
You know, I, I think as long as we made good faith efforts to have people social distance and follow the recommendations of the public health officer, we should be okay. But, um, I mean, those, that law is evolving, and if, um, you know, there's a lot changing on that constantly.
Is, is there an ATA when they expect to have that formulated?
I mean, I haven't heard that there's a draft even circulated yet, so I don't think so. But I will let you guys know as soon as I hear more on that.
Okay, don't throw my question.
Okay, um, thank, thank you, um, Madam Protem. So let's start with the Memorial Day. See, um, what are our feelings regarding, um, these various events?
Councilman Kearney?
Yes, sir.
I think we should, uh, wait until the May eighteenth to decide to cancel the Memorial Day, uh, ceremonies. I know there's, uh, well, three veterans I know, Councilman Reed, uh, Cable Director, Manager, Tom and myself are veterans, and it's a big, big day for veterans. So I think we should wait till May eighteenth and decide on the eighteenth whether we should cancel or go forward with Memorial Day breakfast. And we don't have to have a breakfast either. It could be a Memorial Day service.
Can I ask you what's the, um, why May, the eighteenth?
That's our next city council meeting, I believe.
Oh, council meeting date, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's mine.
Okay.
Robert, this is Jim.
Yes, sir.
Kevin, I wanted to get in on this, because usually we go down the line, but, uh, a couple of things.
No, no, you don't have to go down the line.
In the past, uh, Tiffany, we've talked many times about the fact, I, I was just kind of adding a little piece of information for Burke that, that anybody could sue anybody on anything at any time. So there's always that risk. Whether or not they succeed in a lawsuit's another matter, but it's just something to know, that people sue for things all the time. So that is always just a concern. However, you know, valid or successful it becomes, that's another matter. We just don't know. But, um, the second point with Pat wanting to wait, I'm actually okay with waiting. Um, I, I think it's probably going to be best to just say to play it safe and cancel it, but that's an easy event to kind of set up because it's small. It's not, uh, you know, hugely attended. I don't, there's probably fifty people there that usually go to that thing. So if you want to wait on that, I'm okay with it. Um, but the Health and Safety, that's a bigger event. And, uh, unless we know what's going to be lifted by the governor, their plans, we could probably wait until we get direction on the opening of the fifteenth, which may not happen.
Correct.
So Kevin, my question is, if, if we, uh, we still have time to decide on the Ju- on the June, uh, event? If we wait until after the fifteenth of May?
Yes, it sounds like we may have a little time, but, but-
That's where I'm going, but I just, I'm curious. Kevin, any idea?
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if that question was directed to me. Um-
Well, you were, you were Mike, Mike, no.
Yeah, Mike probably would have a better perspective. Um, I've, I've not been through that event yet to, to see, you know, the scope of it and, and, uh, what, what, uh, planning, um, requirements are.
Yeah.
I, I do know it's a bigger event with a lot of different elements to it, so it would seem to me that we would-
That's right.
A little more time than the Memorial Day Ceremony.
Yeah, right.
Yes, Mayor and City Council members, this is, uh, Mike Estes, Director of Community Services. Is my tone okay here?
There you go, there you go. Soft landing.
Okay, yeah, yeah, th- this is a, a, a pretty time-consuming event in terms of planning. Uh, there are a couple of things that I have, uh, written down really quick, and number one is the location. Uh, you know, the school district, we've been, uh, communicating with them regularly. They still haven't committed either way on whether we would be able to use the property for that. So if we do want to, uh, continue forward with, uh, at least the thought of having this, you know, we might have to consider the, going back to the Civic Center, uh, as a secondary location.
Mike, I'm sorry, this is Kevin Chun, um, City Manager. Uh, just to, um, add to that point there, Mike, um, I, actually, I did speak with the school district regarding, uh, the location, and, um, use of the, the same location on the school site is, is just fine.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Well, that's a bigger area.
Very good, yep.
Yeah. And, and we, we've touched base with, uh, a few people, uh, you know, just to check out their availability. You know, the Community Services Department has about thirty vendors that we typically, uh, invite to the event, and, and more than half, I'd say about sixteen or seventeen, have said, yes, they would be involved, or they would be involved if the order is lifted. And a number of them said, yeah, if the order is, is, uh, not lifted or extended, uh, you know, they, they likely wouldn't be able to participate because they have to get themselves prepared as well. Uh, you know, disc jockey Ed would be available if the safer-at-home order is lifted. You know, we would, uh, have to get busy on starting to arrange for, uh, entertainment and things of that nature. Uh, advertising wouldn't be too much of a problem. Uh, and speaking with Sergeant Nitz with the Sheriff's Department, you know, their participation is pending. You know, their participation has been involved in, you know, providing drought dogs, uh, uh, the earthquake simulator, uh, horses, uh, things of that nature. So, you know, their, their participation would also depend on the safer-at-home order as well. And then we haven't communicated with the, uh, County Fire Department, but I would assume they would probably be in the same boat as us. So, you know, uh, I think getting direction on May eighteenth is, is probably about the last time where we would, uh, be able to counsel or not, or to not counsel and to move forward and to be able to put to, put together a nice event.
You answered my question, Mike. That, that's what I wanted to get down to the-
Okay.
Down to the wire. What would be your deadline date? We would need to know. And then make the decision, you know, based on that, which would, you know.
And, and you know, uh, you know, Council, I think it would be fair to, uh, give Michael Reyes a chance to speak as well, because, you know, this, this event is as much a Municipal Services Department event as it is a Community Services event. So, um, Mr. Reyes, if you don't mind, uh-
Uh, good evening, everyone. This is Michael Reyes, Director of Municipal Services. Um, Michael and I, or, excuse me, Mike and I did talk about this, um, earlier. Uh, it is a shared event. We, we have, uh, about twenty-four vendors that we invite to this as well. Um, people that provide services, uh, to pet owners, uh, people that do demonstrations, and also, uh, vaccinations occur. Um, we have spoke with most of the vendors, and most of them are still willing to come. Uh, they're just curious about how many people are going to show up even if the at-home, safer-at-home orders are lifted. Uh, so that was a big concern. Um, there might still be people that are sheepish about going out. Um, so that was one, one thing that was on, on our minds that we were, as we were discussing this. A, a second one is that in, in, uh, attempting to save money for next year, we did only leave money for one budget, budgeted one event for our department, uh, for all of next year. Um, we left twenty-five hundred dollars in the budget to host one thing. So we could host, we could share this with, with, um, Community Services, uh, have this as our one event for all of two thousand twenty. Um, we could also not do this, let, um, Mike's department do it on their own, just do the Health and Safety component of it, and we could just do our regular vaccination clinics, uh, monthly, which are a lot cheaper, um, but there's no, no vendors, anything like that. It's just a vaccination clinic. Um, that would be a cheaper option, and then I would leave money for one other event later in the year, such as, uh, National Night Out or, uh, Field of Honor, which are our other two events that we host every year. So those were the considerations we had, considerations that we were discussing. Um, again, we're open to whatever direction the council would like to see. Um, all of these, these events are, are good events, so we like them all. We don't want to lose any of them. But of course, those are the considerations, just with money being a concern.
Well, you raised a good point on the cost, but, um, again, from what Mike said, I guess we really don't have to decide until we know what the lifting order will or will not be, right?
Correct, and, and we can, we can prepare our vendors, let them know that, uh, uh, for sure we'll come by the eighteenth. And that would be fine with, that would still work for us, and I think it would work for our vendors.
We have to make a decision on, on the, the eighteenth, is what you're saying, uh, Mike?
Uh, uh, yes, I think that that's about the absolute latest. Obviously, we'd like to have a decision tonight, but we can't, uh, it may be it's a little early to cancel it, and, and maybe we need to find out what happens with safer-at-home. My, my concern would be with the event, it's not the event itself, but as was mentioned in City Manager's report at the start, and a few have mentioned just recently, is that, you know, what, what's the public confidence going to be to come out to an event? Now, I think, I think with the, uh, you know, the, the dog licensing portion, the vaccinations, uh, and all that, I think that people will come out for that regardless. Uh, but I, I would just, uh, you know, we would put a lot of work into an event, and we just really wouldn't be, be sure what our attendance would be, and I would, uh, you know, I, I would just be concerned about that, putting together a, a, a nice event in a short amount of time and really not having, uh, the turnout that we typically would have for this event. That would be, uh, a little disappointing, and some may see it as maybe a, a, a waste of money, so to speak. But, uh, uh, that'll be your call.
Okay, so that's something we can get into further discussion on May the eighteenth. That's like next council, council meeting. That's, that's-
Now, the Councilmen agree, I, I agree.
Okay, thank you, um, Councilman. Um, let's back up to, um, to Memorial Day. Um, Councilman Reed and, I think, um, Protem Suarez didn't weigh in on Memorial Day. Someone else didn't weigh in on Memorial Day.
Yeah, this is Councilman Reed. I, I mean, I absolutely would like to put that decision off. Um, and there's some discussion in the report there of possibly doing something in a virtual base. So rather than not having it at all, uh, I am in favor of a virtual, but I definitely don't want to make a cancellation call today.
Absolutely, so May eighteenth sounds like a good, good time for you?
Yes.
Excellent, okay.
This is Mayor Protem Suarez.
Yes, ma'am.
You can finish, Dan.
Yeah, my apologies. Uh, I think we need to check in with Tom and see how long post-production would take for us to do something electronically.
Yeah, okay, but May, May eighteenth, we, we, it's a good day for the decision on that. Go ahead, Madam, um, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also okay with that. It's, it's not a, a very big event that we, we put on, and, and we can modify that one. That one's easier to kind of plan and, and do, so I'm fine with that as well.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a consensus to wait till, um, May the eighteenth, um, to make a final decision on the Memorial Day Ceremony, to decide whether to have the ceremony, um, in person, person-to-person, or it's some type of virtual ceremony.
Right, and, and Mr. Mayor, this is Kevin Chun, City Manager. Um, I'll come back, um, at the, uh, May eighteenth meeting with a, another report for you to consider.
Okay, great, thank you. And on the Health and Safety, we heard, I heard from two members of the councils, and eighteenth is o- okay to, um, to make a decision on that. I'm, I'm okay with that as well. I think it's a little early to counsel it. Um, anyone else have any, um, opinions on the Health and Safety?
No, Councilman Reed, I agree.
This is Mayor Protem Suarez. Um, I'm okay with waiting, but I think we can- This is Mayor Pro Tem Suarez. I'm okay with waiting, but I think we can also look at postponement, if anything.
Yeah, okay. We'll wait till the eighteenth to make the final determination. I'm sorry, go ahead. Say that again.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm okay with waiting, but I I feel like, you know, based off of the phases that the governor put out, I don't think that we will probably be allowed to throw such an event, but but we can definitely wait till May eighteen.
Yeah, very possible. We don't know.
That's possible. We'll see what it looks like. Okay, so we'll wait till the eighteenth to make a final determination on that item. Okay, the Longdale Beach Transit Service, what do we want to do on this this item? What about Councilman Pat Kearney who brought this item up?
Yeah, okay, thank you. Yes, we should cancel it because I watched our beat go by since last Thursday through Sunday and by my house in Goodwood Avenue, Redondo Beach, there was one rider on it, and the individual, young lady, lived in Redondo Beach, crossed over to take to take it to the Metro League. I think we should cancel it and reinstate our transit system. And I want to know why it's you knew about this April twentieth, but you're now going to start refitting the buses till after today. Those buses should have been done already because you knew this was coming. And I blame the city manager and my guesses on this. I'm done.
Okay, thank you for that. I think the answer may be they they would have to have direction from the city council before moving forward with the Longdale Special Transit Service.
I believe we did that last meeting. By three people, but that's. Go ahead. I'm done.
But I'm in favor of of councilman as well in moving it to the Longdale Special Transit Service. Anyone else have any thoughts on that?
Robert, Jim, I got a question.
Yeah, sure.
I know that it's not general fund money, so what what is the cost benefit? Maybe Mike can answer this of doing that. Are any of those funds able to be? Is there any thought or any suggestions of other places where the funding could be used? I just know it was measure A that we pulled.
Yeah, Mike?
Yes, Mayor and City Council members, Mike Estes again, Director of Community Services. They're Prop A funds, California State Prop A funds, and they can be used in other areas. You know, they're for transit related, which extends into bus stop improvement, signage, you know, improvements to the bus, although we're not going to be making any improvements to our, you know, the contractors' buses, of course, but they can be used in upgrades to our present city vehicles that are used for transportation purposes. And just a real a quick comment about Longdale Special Transit is we are moving right now to make the necessary safety provisions in in the vehicles to protect the drivers from exposure to COVID nineteen or anything else for that matter. But yes, the the there's many different areas you can use the funds in, Councilman Osborne, but it's generally just transportation related. Yeah, so so it's not.
It sounds like you've given it some thought, so you already have some designated areas where you could do do the real reallocation of the funding? You're already prepared or something like that?
Well, like I said, they could be reallocated to other other transportation purposes. You know, we have have discussed bus stop improvements since Kevin Chun came on to the job several months ago. That would be a large project that we're targeting that, you know, we would need Prop A funds for that, and I know Public Works has funds for that as well. You know, some of the things we're looking at doing with the Longdale Special Transit, I can comment on if you folks would like to hear, but things like, you know, trying to make the buses safer, things like that, Prop A funding could be used for for those elements as well. Or 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 purchase of another vehicle if if, you know, AQMD AQMD funding isn't available. But, you know, it's fairly restricted, but there's a lot of different areas we could use that money for, you know, for the Longdale Beat.
Mike, I got another question on, you know, like Matt said, he's observed it with fewer ridership, and it's appeared that way to me, too, at least where I see it passing along the Boulevard on Prairie. Are your stats still reflecting a decline during the pandemic of ridership?
They are. In fact, I got the the April reports today, and I was combing through those and looking at percentages and whatnot. And we've seen a seventy-eight percent decrease.
Seventy-eight, oh.
Yeah, between between generally, it's generally between about March sixteenth, when the safer at home order came about. But we're going to call it a full two months, March and April. More significantly in March, I think, I'm I'm sorry, more significantly in April, I think the past three to four weeks, in fact, it may be safe to say just about the entire month of April, we've really seen ridership plummet more so in April than we have in March. But but yeah, overall, the last two months of full reporting, we're seeing about a seventy-eight percent decrease as of February twenty-ninth compared to April thirtieth reports.
Wow. Last question on, who knows when, but if the pandemic is largely under control, as far as it is, how much leeway time do you need to get everything back up and running like it was?
With the Longdale Beat?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would imagine that would be a pretty quick turnaround time. I would say it would be fair to give them, you know, we we gave them about a week's notice that we were shutting down and suspending, and I would think they wouldn't take any longer than a week to get back in uh get back in in business and en route. But I could I could have that discussion with them and, you know, look ahead and see what what they actually really require to get started up again. You know, their bus drivers are all under contract and 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 still working for the company. They probably just moved them to other contracts temporarily, but I I don't I don't think that would be a very lengthy process at all, but I I could find out.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that discussion. Speaking of Prop A, the bus stop on Hawthorne Boulevard at Rose Creek, I know it needed some repair, the slab. Did we ever repair that? And if so, with Prop A fund, our savings in Prop A fund, can that be used for that?
Yes, this is Mayor. Mr. Mayor, this is Kevin Chun. I believe it was a couple of weeks back, I I reported to the council that we did receive approval from Metro for use of Prop A funds to repair that that slab. And I believe it was, and correct me if I'm wrong, either Kahona or 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 Mike, it was about thirty thousand dollars to to repair that, and again, it would be using Prop A funds.
So I guess my question would be if we if we're moving our, we're changing our transit to the Longdale Special Transit with that savings in Prop A fund, will that be enough to pay to pay for that?
Well, the funds for the for the bus stop have already been approved for years, so that's a project that we can move forward with.
Yeah, I know it's been approved, and it's going to cost about thirty thousand, but we're going to save save money by suspending the Longdale Beat. I'm wondering, is that savings equivalent to less than or greater than the money we're going to spend in Prop A funds for the repair of the Hawthorne bus stop?
Right. I got you. Yeah, I mean, we can certainly take a look at what other transit improvement related projects that we need to do. And then, you know, because Prop A funds is can only be used for transit related improvements, we'll have to see what what that potential can be used for.
Okay. All righty, so okay, so that would be the consensus of the council.
What's the ETA for our buses, our transit buses to be ready to go?
Mayor, City Council members, Mike Estes again. You know, we're working on a number of things, making the buses safer. I I would say realistically, one of the things we're looking at doing is setting him sending him in for some work to be done to apply vinyl shields in between the passenger seats and and the back of the the bucket seat for the driver to keep things safer for all the passengers and the driver. That's one thing we're looking at. That probably could be about a week long project. I'm I'm thinking that we should have this thing up and running. I I would say within a couple of weeks, and that's that's a realistic assessment.
So by our next city council meeting, it should be up and running, correct?
That would be a goal of mine. Yes, I certainly hope so. Once again, we're at the mercy of some of these other people doing this work, and, you know, there's a couple of other things we're looking at, like, you know, hand pumps for sanitizers onboard and stuff like that, which nobody can seem to find. There's other little things that we need to handle like that, but once again, as City Manager mentioned earlier, our goal is to make this thing as safe for the drivers and the passengers as as possible. But I can commit to trying to make this happen in two weeks, and I think I can.
Okay.
And just to just to piggyback on on what Mike has mentioned, just for clarification, after the April twentieth meeting, Mike and I met almost right away to discuss what needed to be done to get the special transit reinstated and up and running again. And I know Mike reached out to vendors right away to to see what type of equipment was needed and if it could be installed and what the cost was. So it it was something that we did look into right away. It does, unfortunately, it's going to take a little bit longer than we'd like or hope, but we're going to try to get that done as soon as possible.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, one thing other I'd like to mention is, you know, these improvements that we're making to the special transit, you know, I think just because, you know, the safer at home orders would be lifted and all that, I think I think social distancing may be around for a while. So whatever improvements we're making to the special transit right now would be applicable to safer buses in the future, just not for only this situation here. So that's what we're trying to do, is trying to ensure the buses are set up for long term as well.
Okay, good point. Good point. Thank you for adding that. Okay, with that, in the case, we should, let's have a a motion that we approve the the recommendations with the modification of wait, wait to see for the regarding the Memorial Day ceremony on May eighteenth, also wait and see approach on May eighteenth concerning the health and safety pet care, and also the approval of the suspension of the, oh, the suspension of the Longdale Beat Transit Service and the implementation of the Longdale Special Transit Service instead. So do we have a motion to that effect?
Councilman Kearney here.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Dan. I'll second it.
All right, Ms. Councilman Reed, I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have Reed making the motion and seconded by Councilman Pat Kearney. Okay, Councilman Reed, Councilman Pat Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion by the council? And now, hearing none rather, for the council, please vote. I'm going to ask the city clerk to give a call.
Mayor Pro Tem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero for item eleven.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number twelve is an update on the use of the Best Western Hotel as a temporary shelter, homeless shelter through the Project Room Key. Let's have this last report, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the City Council. This is Michael Reyes, Director of Municipal Services. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight and to give you this update on the use of Best Western Hotels, a temporary homeless shelter through Project Room Key. In early April, Governor Gavin Newsom launched Project Room Key with the purpose of providing shelter to homeless individuals most susceptible to the COVID nineteen virus due to their inability to shelter in place. Under this program, homeless individuals sixty-five years or older or those with preexisting medical conditions would be housed temporarily in hotel and motel and motels throughout California. In order to secure the fifteen thousand rooms needed throughout Southern California to house these homeless individuals, hotel operators were contacted directly by Los Angeles County and presented opportunities to enter into contracts to provide rooms for the homeless. The property owner of the Best Western Hotel located at fifteen thousand Hawthorne Boulevard accepted an offer from the county without the city of Longdale's knowledge or council. On April fifteenth, members of the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority and people assisting the homeless began operations at the hotel and started admitting homeless guests on April twenty-third with the objective of filling in all ninety-seven rooms with homeless residents. At the time the staff report was written, the hotel had sixty-five occupants and sixty rooms. As of this afternoon, the hotel now has one hundred occupants and ninety-one of the rooms occupied. There are path staff at the property twenty-four hours a day, along with two security guards who do regular patrols and limit access into the hotel. During the day, the hotel also has medical personnel on site checking the temperature of each guest three times a day before each meal and also checking the temperatures while people entering into the hotel. Case managers are also available to assist the homeless and attempt to find long term housing for their clients. Additionally, the city has posted a deputy in front of the hotel and has assigned the director of municipal services to do twice daily visits to the hotel and get regular updates from PATH and the county. As I say, there have been no health or public safety incidents, large or small, as a result of Project Room Key. Also, municipal services department staff continues to do ongoing daily outreach to the homeless as part of the homeless operations plan and has seen a significant decline in the number of homeless on our streets. Our contacts from the county guaranteed that no fewer than twenty-four rooms would be reserved for Longdale's homeless, and to that end, the county has kept their word. Twice daily visits to the hotel will continue for the duration of this operation, and I will provide the city council regular updates of any incidents that occur at this property. Fiscal impact of this Project Room Key are unknown at this time, although staff and sheriffs are monitoring the hotel resulting in a reduction in time available for other duties. The recommendation of staff is that city council receive and file this report and provide direction to staff as appropriate. And I can answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Director of Municipal Services. Are there any questions, rather, of the director's report concerning Project Room Key?
Robert, Jim?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make my colleagues aware. I sent some photos that I had taken on Friday at the beginning of this program that wasn't wasn't all great because there was a passed out individual, apparently a transient, out in the middle of the Boulevard, right across from the hotel. There was a black and white parked out in front of the hotel, but there was also another individual. I don't know what was going on with that. I just did a drive down the street, and I did notice a few new individuals pushing shopping carts down. So hopefully that stuff can continue to be addressed and not be reoccurring.
Yes, Councilman Osborne, thank you for that information. I did send a message to Sandy about individuals that have been passed out, including one today passed out on Prairie and Marine in front of the liquor store. We are still doing outreach daily and entering individuals into LA Hop so that they can be put in the queue to go into the hotel. As of right now, the hotel is at almost maximum capacity. We are seeing some additional homeless that we hadn't seen before. I'm not sure if word got out of about the hotel, but we're trying to get those individuals housed as well.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
In the last report I heard, there was nine Longdale, I should say, people who was experiencing homelessness in Longdale that's been housed there. Have the number have this number increased? I know the twenty-four is a commitment, but.
Yeah, all all twenty-four rooms have that were promised to the city of Longdale have been guaranteed with Longdale homeless. We confirmed this information on Friday, and and we did get twenty-four rooms.
Okay, so we did get twenty-four, okay. That was one of the things we insisted in the mediation is that that they not only reserved twenty-four rooms, but they actually take a proactive position in actually getting twenty-four people actually to fill the room as opposed to, first, the strategy was just simply to make the rooms available for a limited time and a very limited time, but we insisted that, no, they have to do a real assertive effort to actually house twenty-four people in Longdale. So I'm glad to hear that that part is happening.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we provided the PATH and LASSA with our list of outreach for all the homeless in Longdale. And to their credit, every day after I visit the hotel, I do patrols of the neighborhood, and I hit all the known homeless hotspots and House of Yahweh, the Condon Corridor, under the under the bridges of four or five, we haven't seen homeless like we used to. Most of them have been taken into the hotel.
Okay. Thank you for that. Are there any other questions? Any other questions?
This is Mayor Pro Tem Suarez.
Yes, ma'am.
Ladies first.
I just had a quick question regarding, I was under the impression these were going to be individuals, so there's more than one to a room, it looks like, and are those family members or are they just trying to cram more?
It does look like there's, no, good evening, Councilman Suarez. Yes, there is about five rooms that are housed by couples. I was under the impression that there wasn't going to be single individuals only as well. So, yeah, the the county wasn't completely forthcoming with that.
Yes, just Councilman Kearney, Mayor? Yeah, because when I talked to Mr. Wang, he was under the impression there were single people for single rooms. was under the impression there were single people for single rooms. So another little hiccup by the county.
Yes, that's one of the few that we're aware of. Also, they were supposed to take people directly from existing shelters. Of course, some of those were ours that they took in, so we're happy about that. But, yeah, the county, the information that was told to Mr. Wang is not completely accurate.
Yeah. And then, the City Manager's meeting updates, the county on four twenty-nine, he mentioned that the county wants to do a partnership agreement with us. You know, we got screwed twice without being kissed. You know, I tell them whether to stick that agreement out. A partnership agreement, really?
Okay. Any other questions or observations? Okay, let's go ahead, let's have a motion to receive and file the staff report of the Municipal Service Director, so we can make that official. I made the motion that we receive and file the Municipal Service Director's report.
Councilman Kearney. Yes, Councilman Kearney, I'll second it.
Okay, and seconded by Kearneys. So the motion's been made by Pullum Miles and seconded by Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? None with the Clerk. Please.
Item number twelve, Mayor Protem Suarez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osborne?
Yes.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Kearney?
Yes.
Mayor Pullum Miles?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is the City Manager's report. Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No further reports tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's have the report of Councilmembers. Anything you want to share? Let's start with Councilmember Osborne.
Nope, no, no report, just everybody, I hope they're staying safe and not being too bored.
Yes, sir, thank you. Councilmember Dangery?
Yeah, I'm all here. I've been sequestered here and nothing rolling, so here I am.
Sequestered, okay, there we go. That's a new word. Quarantine, sequestered, there we go. Councilmember Pat Kearney?
Just two things I want to mention to the Council and staff, that Wichita Pooh and Burt Saul passed away this past Tuesday at the conference room she was in.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah, and I don't know who we're in contact, because as you all know, I don't know if you know or not, her daughter passed away before her, her grandson's son passed away before her, so I don't know who to send a grievance to, and I want to remind everybody to have a happy Cinco de Mayo tomorrow in your homes. I'll be in San Clemente.
Yeah, right.
Very good. Thank you for that information, Pat. I've got a contact with the family. I'll get together with you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that. Mayor Protem Suarez?
I have nothing to report. Just stay safe everyone and keep sanitizing.
Thank you, ma'am. So, just real quick, so I did attend the emergency conference status at the request of Judge Carter regarding Project Room Key, which also included a sort of a mediation session with the counties and the city of L.A., along with our city attorneys and our city manager. And basically, we were able to, you know, voice our concerns about the program, voice our, the fact that the county did not include the city in this project at all before announcing it, and how we were unpleased with that, to say the least. A very frank discussion. We were able to make, you know, some minor, you know, some minor, if you will, provisions, they were allowed, and such as the taking some of the homeless people off the streets in the city of Longdale, which was not part of the program and didn't make any sense for them to have a homeless program, and we have a homeless issue, but yet they were not included in the program. So, once again, I'm delighted to see that they did come through with their commitment to having twenty-four beds reserved for Longdale homeless. One of the things that we talked about also was the TOT tax, Transit Occupancy Tax, and that was still kind of outstanding as to whether or not they were going to remit taxes to the city, and they left it at that they would take a look at our ordinance, and based on the ordinance, they would decide whether or not it's, whether or not it applies, basically, and if so, they would... Yeah, and if so, that they would remit the TOT tax. I subsequently learned, actually today, from, I was on a call with elected officials regarding Project Room Key, and they said in that call that they, that the county was actually paying TOT to the city. So I'm going to ask the City of Canyon City Manager to follow up on that item, because they said today that they will be paying TOT. So if that's true, at least we'll be getting Transit Occupancy Tax out of this issue.
We listen to that shit.
Yeah, that's what they said today on the call. Other than that, we'll see what else happens with this program and how it goes from here. I'm glad that we have a, the sheriff has a presence there, and so far there has not been any incidents there, and we hope that remains the case, but we will take vigilance on that. With that, that's all I have. Okay, but we do have a closed session tonight. We have one closed session tonight to confirm with legal counsel concerning anticipated litigation. I'm going to ask the City Attorney to give us the provision of the closed session.
The City Council meeting closed session on one item of anticipated litigation as agendized as item K fourteen pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4. As the county, the city is considering whether to initiate litigation in one case against Best Western Plus, Best Western Plus South Bay Hotel and the County of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. At this time, we're going to reach best to closed session. Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm going to ask the City Attorney to give the report of closed session.
The City Council met in closed session on one item of anticipated litigation. The council was updated, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. It's German time. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at six thirty P.M. on Monday, May the eighteenth. It is now nine ten, and this meeting is adjourned.